Thank you, Scott. All right. So I'm called to order our work session for September 1st, 2020. And our first item of business is our semi-annual quarterly, I forget, discussion with our Judge Kimberly Graves and Carla Bant, our court operations supervisor.
Great. Well, I think we're doing it semi-annually now is what we decided, though, of course, the last few months feel like a year, year and a half in and of themselves.
Easily.
So the court operations, as far as the last few months, we switched a lot of things over to being handled by the office staff, whereas in the past, folks would come in and see me at arraignment time and I could offer deferred sentencing or change their fine, things of that sort, or a lot of time change if it was driving uninsured, but they've gotten insurance, change it to failure to carry proof of insurance. Some of those changes I was making, we opened things up a little bit more so that the staff could do that. We haven't held any arraignments since March. Everything's been dealt with over the phone or online. And it's dealing with a large number of cases. It's also causing a lot of folks to set their case for trial. So we've seen a really big uptick in folks setting cases for trial. And I don't think that that means anything other than folks really want to be able to see the judge and say what happened. And if they can't do that, setting their case for trial, they know they'll get to. But for the most part, I think that that's been going fairly smoothly. I've been talking to the front office staff about what are they hearing from people? And so we've made changes there, reducing parking tickets by $10 when the defendant calls in to the court to say, hey, what can we do with this? Things of that sort. We also, in the past, if you wanted to write a letter to the judge, you had to pay the full fine upfront, and then we would issue a refund. That's not feasible for some people ever, and it's certainly not feasible for more people now. So we did, kind of at the discretion of the front office staff, say, if somebody really truly can't pay the money upfront to write the letter, let them write the letter. You know, those are the folks who before would have come to arraignment and said, I can't pay this thing, what can we do? How can you help? You know, what payment plan options are there? So trying to give folks a little bit more flexibility to handle their cases. Deferred sentencing, we also have found an online program that we're using. We had held folks off for a while because Emmanuel Hospital was trying to come up with something. It's just not happening fast enough. So we have switched to an online program called U-turn 180, and that'll keep our deferred sentencing cases going. Those were the two, just kind of functioning of the court issues that I had. Any questions there about how we're running things or what we're seeing? And then I'll talk about legislation and a couple of the little programs.
There was a question that came up in the listening session that I attended last week, and so I wanted to get a little bit of, you know, sort of feedback and, you know, check in with you. We heard from a woman who needed to bring in, I think they were grandchildren with her, to a hearing, and she was under the impression, she reported that she was asked to wait to be last, to be seen. And the way she was reporting it, it sounded like a policy. And so I just wanted to check in with you and ask you if that was a policy, you know, and if there might be some consideration for, you know, for sort of flipping that. But I wanted to give you the chance to respond to that. And let me know if that's not clear.
No, so I'm guessing this has to be pre-COVID, since I'm sure...
Oh, sure.
Okay. So I was making sure, I thought, this doesn't ring a bell at all. I have generally had a pretty open policy about children. They don't bother me. I kind of feel the same way about, you know, service dogs that you question whether that's a service dog or not, but well-behaved children, well-behaved dogs, I tend to not care. They can come in, you know, as they're called. In the past, like many, many moons ago, people with children were waiting out in the area that is now the business section, that used to be the upstairs conference room. And we had a lot of people at that time. So if you had children, you waited out there, then we would bring in a group, I would tell everyone their rights, and then we would take the case with the children first. What has happened recently, and I imagine this is what happened to her, was, oh, and when those would happen, the security folks would put a sticky on the case that says this person has children. And so I would know, okay, we bring them in at this time. What happened a couple of times recently was, I had read everyone their rights, I get three citations in, and there's the sticky that says someone has children. So do I call them in now and subject everyone else that's already in the room to the rights again? Or do I have them wait until I do the rights the next time? And so that does push them a little farther down the docket. It was more a training issue with the security staff. I said, if you've got a kid case, you've got to put a big sticky on it, you've got to make sure I know about it. And so I think that that's been remedied, but there were definitely probably two times where somebody did get bumped back further than they should have. Does that clarify?
Yeah, that's really helpful to understand.
Anything else about just general court operations and how we've been plugging along?
I was curious, you mentioned deferred sentencing. Could you talk about what kind of cases you handle that involve deferred sentencing?
Yeah, so we have two different deferred sentencing programs historically. There's been one for first-time violator or hasn't had a violation in the last five years, but has five years of driving record. So, you know, you can't get your license, get a ticket the next month, and use deferred sentencing, because not only are we acknowledging that it's your first ticket, we also want to acknowledge that you've gone five years without getting a ticket, so you're doing well. And those folks would go to the, it's called the High Risk Driver Safety Program, it's at Emmanuel Hospital, one time, four-hour class. And then they'd pay a court fee. The next year, we would just hold on to their case, and at the end of the year, we would dismiss it if they'd gotten no new tickets, paid their fee, and gone to class. The other one is for folks who are still in high school that get their first ticket. So they haven't had their license the five years, but again, it's their first ticket, they're still in high school. And it was called the Young Driver Improvement Program, again, through Emmanuel Hospital. And for those folks, they pay a little bit of reduced fee from the other adults, and they actually come back to court in six months, so I can ask them, what did you learn? What didn't you know before you went to class? And then we would dismiss their case at that time, assuming they had no other tickets. So the U-turn 180 program, we actually looked at a few years ago. I went through their online program, just to see what I thought about it. It was a good program. I just really like the Trauma Nurses Talk Tough, the High Risk Driver Program at Emmanuel. I certainly think it's more impactful. And so we stuck with that program. U-turn 180 is certainly a good program and already up and running online long prior to the time that we're currently in. Oh, and the cases it can go through is, generally speaking, a moving violation. Cell phone cases do not qualify, they can't do deferred sentencing. But your speeding tickets, failure to obey a traffic control device, things of that sort, can all go through.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else before I move on to legislation?
Yeah, I'm curious about the kind of numbers we saw with non-trailored vehicles parking at the park, because I'm getting a lot of emails on that. I'm curious if I'm getting an email from every single person that got a ticket, or...
Right?
Like 5%.
The bane of my summer existence. I don't, I don't know. Did someone say that Carla is on the call? I don't know if Carla would have a better idea of numbers of tickets. They are significant.
They are a lot of tickets, it's just not John writing tickets, our parking enforcement man, it is our, it is our officers. Like, the other day, I saw one of our officers went over to the boat ramp and wrote eight tickets just for that violation. And so it's very significant, and people are not understanding why they can't park. And even with the new sign that went up, John was telling me that people are still not really heeding, he's still writing tickets over there. So we're getting quite a few for the boat ramp. I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to when the weather gets nasty and nobody goes to the park anymore, you know, to the boat ramp, so yeah.
Mayor, just as a heads up, the sign is posted, we have it in two locations. It says that the parking is strictly enforced, and it gives the $80 amount on the sign, just to be explicit with people about how serious we are.
When was that posted?
About two weeks? Two weeks ago, week and a half ago?
Okay.
It was posted right before my last court session, which was the 26th.
I want to consider different places, more signs or something, because I cruised through the parking lot, because I'd gotten yet another complaint, and woman saying that we had way more parking spaces for trailers than we did for regular cars, and I was thinking, I thought that was roughly equal. So I went to go count the things, and I was looking for the signs, and I couldn't, I did not see the signs. So I'm wondering if we need them, like, at those parking places, and not in every single stall maybe, but every second or third stall, something?
So I can tell you from my angle, because of course I get the folks who are coming into court, the two defenses I get the most are, I didn't see the signs, or there was no other parking, so I figured I could just park there, which could be a, I didn't see the signs, or a, I didn't understand I'd actually get a ticket for this. So I was hopeful the signing, as it was worded, strictly enforced, $80 fine, would help, but you're right, if folks don't see them, then it makes no difference.
I'll go down tomorrow.
I did see the signs, for what it's worth.
They're regular, like...
So, but I am hopeful if people see the signs as worded, that the tickets will go down. I mean, just from what I see. And I actually appreciated that I had a ticket the other day for a gentleman who parked his boat with, or parked his vehicle with a trailer in town, because he couldn't find a spot at the boat ramp. So now I can actually tell all those folks who say, there's no boat trailers there, that there's a flip side to this, and that there's folks who have boat trailers who can't park there.
Oh, that's definitely the case. We have folks with boat trailers, they were parking along McLaughlin, and ODOT finally signed that as no parking. So there's more of them going into downtown by Milwaukee High School, and we are seeing a few of them even in the Island Station neighborhood.
Yeah. But yeah, for what it's worth, I think that the new signs, if they're visible, will certainly help, at least for the people that I see coming in. So with legislation, there's been two bills that have been passed that affect the court directly. I'm sure that you're aware of them. If not, I just wanted to throw them in there. The House Bill 4210 is the one that says courts can no longer suspend licenses for failure to comply with a payment plan or for non-payment. We are still permitted to suspend a license for failure to appear. So it has changed things to some degree, because obviously, you walk out the door, you don't make a payment, we can't suspend your license. I don't think it solved the problem the legislature thought they were solving, which is folks who, you know, get that ticket, they don't pay it, they've been suspended now for, you know, five or six years, they want to get a driver's license and get a job, well, they still have to go back and pay. I guess we've prevented that problem from five years from now. But as of today, I don't think it changed anything for the folks that are currently suspended for failure to comply. But that's one of the bills going forward that we have to take into consideration. Some other courts have gotten creative in a way that I don't know is what we should be doing, which is they've started sending people letters for failing to comply or failing to pay, and then as soon as the person fails to show up, because they're requiring them to come in every month, then they are suspending them for failure to appear. Is it creative way to still suspend the exact same people? And I don't intend to do it. I think that the legislature was clear, at least in what they're trying to prevent, and just getting a crafty workaround doesn't make sense to me, for what that's worth. The other bill is Senate Bill 1601, and that one, if you start at the beginning of the bill, you'll have no idea why it relates to the court, because it doesn't appear to, but thrown in in Section 20 at the bottom... But thrown in in Section 20 at the bottom is a prohibition or a moratorium, it says, on certain traffic offenses that prohibits police officers from writing tickets for, let's see, about 10 different violations occurring between March 1st and December 31st. And so I've talked to, well, we sent an email over to the police department reminding them of this. And I've talked to a few of the officers there so that they understand that if these tickets are coming into the court, they're going to be dismissed because the legislature said you can't cite people. Most of them are related to the DMV. Like I couldn't get my license renewed because the DMV was closed or I couldn't get my vehicle registered, things of that sort. But those are the two bills that have recently passed that directly affect the court. Any questions there? Okay, so I just had two other quick things. Attendance Court, we had one court session last year. It was in February. It was for one middle school student. We couldn't do the follow-up in March because we had closed down by then. We kept in touch with the school. By April, it was clear that there wasn't going to be any change in the student's position or attendance to school. And so we closed out the case at that time. Our contract with the school district was just one year. So we were in touch with them this spring, talking about whether they wanted to continue the program. And they said that they did. So that contract has been renewed. As an aside, I was in conversation with the Clackamas County Juvenile Magistrate about Attendance Court that they handle. And she said they've seen an enormous pullback from all their school districts. That the districts are just less interested in using the court system to enforce transparency or to try to get students attending school. So I don't expect we'll see any cases this year. And we might see the program sort of fade away. Not necessarily in a bad way. I think the school was forced to put some things into practice that are hopefully working and is keeping students out of court because they're taking care of the problems sooner.
I don't think that the diminished interest is about COVID and the fact that nobody's actually going to school.
Right. I mean, and it might be, except that last year, we, we saw one case all of last school year. But the reason for the delay and the, and kind of setting it aside for a school year was because they were putting things into practice. They set up quite a tiered system of you need to do this, you need to do that, and it needs to be reviewed before you can ever send someone to court. And so I think that that hopefully just flushed out so many cases that they were able to deal with them internally. And then one more thing, and I only have half the numbers because the program just ended yesterday, was the amnesty program. And that ran from July 1 to August 31. The numbers that Carla gave me for July was that the city, city's portion was $15,310. And that was 34 people paying off 51 tickets. And they were paying those at half what they owed. So that freed up 34 people to get their licenses back, at least through our court. And then hopefully if August was similar, we may have gotten, say, 50 to 60 people cleared out of the system and able to get their license back. Which I think that this is truly what the legislature was trying to do with House Bill 4210, was get people their licenses back in their hands when they made mistakes years ago. And so we were able to do that. And I'm interested to hear what the final numbers were come the end of August, when it all closed out yesterday. But I would say that that was pretty successful if we were able to get that many people a license back in, or the ability to get a license back in hand.
Remind me what that mean percentage wise is for that? Didn't have their license for that long. I'm trying to get a sense of scale here.
Do you mean how many folks that we have currently suspended? Wow, that's a good question and I don't know the answer. Carla, do you know how many open cases we have?
Not off the top of my head, Judge Graves. I would have to go through and run numbers. But there's quite a few. I mean, when we started the amnesty program and Bonnie and I came to counsel, you guys chose for us to go back two years and backwards. And we sent out 4, 4,500 postcards to people telling them that they were eligible to, at collections to, you know, contact them about the amnesty program. And that's just people that, within the last two years, that have been, have gone to collections. So I don't know how many people, off the top of my head, how many people have been actually suspended. But since, since some of the program, we did do parking also during the program. And we also did marijuana, which neither one of those are suspendable for. So I don't, I don't, as far as the program, the amnesty program, I don't know exactly how much the separation was out. I'd have to look at the notes when Bonnie and I came to counsel. I think that was all in the counsel packet, how many tickets we had and this and that violations. So if it was a moving violation, there was a suspension. But the parking and the marijuana, there was no suspension for.
And also Carla and I, as we go through the numbers, we're going to take this back to city council and I'll give you a more in-depth analysis of what we came, what we found.
Thank you.
I mean, 60 or 70 out of 4,500 sounds like, you know, a very small percent. But I mean, but, you know, I mean, those people having their license back. I mean, and it was interesting, you're 34 people paying 51 tickets. That means half the people had two tickets, basically. People had many tickets, I guess, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I know we had a lot of people that were real excited about the program. They would call, they would call the front counter and ask about their accounts. And then we would explain, we had this amnesty program. And they were really excited about the fact that they would only have to pay half the money and they were able to get their license back. Especially Milwaukee was the only one that was holding it up. So they, you know, that was one, that's another factor too, is hopefully some of these people that we have in our drawer, they just don't owe us money. They owe many cities monies, which means that even if they pay off us, they're not going to get a license back until they pay everybody off in all the jurisdictions. So, you know, that's, that's a big factor too. So we're hoping that the ones that we did get are the ones that just owed us just money so we can get them back on the road and get them reinstated.
So that's all I had on my list of things to update on. Is there anything I missed? Anything anyone was thinking of that I should, I should talk about? Well, I will figure I covered it all then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for fitting me in. And I'm interested to hear, like I said, how the amnesty program went overall. And we'll keep plugging along and kind of adjusting as we need to with arraignments and holding the court sessions and see how we do. But I think for the most part, it's going pretty smoothly.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Karen, drive safe. Back from Head River.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'm muted. Like I said, our next item will be a Library Board Annual Report. It'll be presented by Katie Newell. And it looked like we had a, yeah, Jess Stetson is also in the Zoom.
Mayor, Katie is actually out this evening, so she is being replaced by Jana Hoffman.
Okay, cool. Hi, Jana.
Thank you.
You're muted, Jana.
How's that?
There you go.
I think Jess is going to start for us.
Hi, Anne. Hello, everyone. And hello to those of you I haven't met. I feel like I've met most of you or I've annoyed most of you. So my name at least looks familiar. I've been on the Letting Library Board since my son was born, so about four years now. So I've probably got a couple more years under my belt and then I will term out. But I am the current chair as of a couple of months ago. So I was going to start off just with some highlights from the last year. Then I was going to talk about some of the upcoming priorities for the Library Board and then a few other updates. And then I will throw it over to what I'm calling Jana time. So she will be able to do a nice little overview of some other details. Starting off with the 2019 to 2020 highlights, we did add two new members to the Library Board in April. Krista Downs and Ryan Healy were both with us for the full six years, I believe. And they turned out in March. So we added two wonderful women, Carla Branson and Ann Heliger, whose name I always mispronounce. I apologize for that. For the coming year, I am the chair and Robin Chetister with elected vice chair. We also elected a secretary, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, and that is Anne. Our number one priority over the last year has really been, obviously, the move to the library. So how can we help facilitate that? What questions do we, we have or what answers can we bring as members of the community? And then the second priority was continued support to libraries in the libraries in Clackamas County. For LDAC, which is the Library District Advisory Committee, Krista stepped down as representative on March 31st. And Robin took her place and was confirmed in May. Myself and a woman named Erin Lee, along with Shane Abma and, and Katie Newell are all serving on the Library District Task Force. But due to coronavirus, it is on hold. So those are the highlights. I'll talk about priorities next. Does anybody have any questions about that before I pop into priorities?
Just curious. Are they expecting to keep it on hold into next year? I mean, they're not going to.
I don't think we've heard.
We haven't heard.
I, so. Yeah, we haven't heard anything. I get the impression, I mean, they, they had the first couple of meetings. We all went down to Oregon City or tried to go down to Oregon City. And there are a lot of people took corral. And so I think that they have to look at how they're going to potentially streamline that process before they could do something in the time of coronavirus. It would just be a really big lift to have that many people on a Zoom. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll talk about the upcoming priorities. So obviously first in line is taking care of the library and also taking care of the library staff. So we are obviously hoping to safely reopen the library. That's a continued priority. But prioritization of supporting library staff is number one. Jana's going to talk a little bit more about curbside pickup, which is actually really cool. We heard about it at the Library Board meeting last week and it's been very popular. Of course, some residents are struggling with it, but we can expect that. And things seem to be going relatively smoothly. The other priority for 2020 to 2021 is creating a strategic plan for the library. We had started talking about this last year, but again, with COVID-19, we decided to put it on hold until we can meet in person. There are a couple of folks on the Library Board who do have experience doing this. I am one of them as well. And having those meetings in person is just so much easier than trying to coordinate and talk over each other in Zoom. So obviously if things go a long time, we'll reevaluate that decision. But for now, the strategic plan is on hold, at least for the next couple of months. I myself could not add more Zooms to my already full plate. So giving everybody a mental break. And then finally, other updates, we did update the bylaws. So there was a recommended change to the bylaws to add the position of secretary. Again, Ann Heliger is confirmed in this role. Some kind of cool news that even though COVID happened and there were a lot of folks who were still finding their footing, trying to, you know, find the new library, get away from the pod palace and that kind of thing. February was the biggest month ever at the Letting Library. So that's really exciting. June numbers, if you look at them, they're about a fifth of what they were in February, but they are starting to come back with regards to loans and that kind of thing. So hopefully we'll continue to see those numbers jump. And then one final note, for the future and upon reopening, the board would like to highlight that there is some staff time that was supposed to be given back, for lack of a better term, to the library in the new budget year. Because they're not fully opened, it sounds like they're relatively okay right now. But if they were to open full time, the library will not have enough folks to cover circulation. So I wanted to highlight that as an important note from the board. And with that, I will throw it to Jana or answer any questions.
Are there questions first? Or if not, I'll be happy to share about what we've been doing this summer especially to kind of fill the gap while we're closed to the public. Okay, so I'll talk about, I'll talk about the main thing that you've probably heard about. We're doing curbside pickup. So we have scheduled pickup appointments available for people to stop by and get either books they have on hold or books they might have requested for us. We have a book help form that we've added to the website, as well as we're getting calls all the time where people say, you know, I'm sick of the 10 books I've had for six months. Can you please pull? Actually, we're pulling as many as 30 books at a time for people. And in the children's library, there are a lot of families requesting new books for their kids. But adults too are requesting books all the time. So right now, we're offering that curbside pickup six days a week between the hours of 9:00 and 5:40. We're, we're scheduling about 100 appointments a day. We, we schedule two people every 10 minutes. Since August 18th, so in the last couple of weeks, we've had almost 1,200 scheduled pickup appointments. And we've been doing the six day a week pickups since mid-June. So we started offering that on June 15th. Prior to that, for probably three weeks, maybe a little longer, we were doing five day a week pickups. And that was just of things that had been on our hold shelf since we closed in March. But ever since June, we've been getting holds in from all the libraries in Clackamas County. And it's definitely, it's picked up every week. So in the last, probably in the last three weeks or so, we are now usually scheduling a couple days out. So we used to be able to, if someone would call in the morning, we still had slots available in the afternoon. But now we're filling up a little bit faster as the word spreads.
I called Thursday morning and I had to wait until Monday.
Oh, that's painful. That's, that's longer than we like to have people wait.
It's okay. It was totally.
Yeah, but that's hard. I feel your pain. Let's see. So I think that's all I have to say about the curbside pickup. We are, this summer, we also, we were able to offer one in-person program, which was great. Every Thursday for eight weeks between the hours of 11:00 and 12:00, we offered free sack lunch, grab and go activity bags and free books for kids in the park right outside the children's library, right outside above the amphitheater. The meals were provided by the North Clackamas Schools as part of the free lunch program. But then we added free craft bags and books. And we, for the last month, the last four weeks of the program, we were getting, we gave out about 100 bags per week. They were, they were averaging about 90 lunches at each of those weeks, but we were giving out the full 100 craft bags and books. It was a total over the course of the summer of 633 free lunches that were given out here at the library, 686 craft bags and 695 books just for that meals program. So that was, it was really incredible to see the folks lined up around the corner of the building. And nice just to see them in person as well. We got lots of other questions while they were here. I should mention, we did also go to each of the free lunch sites in Milwaukee. Over the course of the summer, we went once to each site and handed out free books. It's actually six different schools. So that was another great way to reach folks who maybe we hadn't reached yet. We also gave them summer reading bags at those events. We've been offering some online programs as well. You've probably seen those. We've done online videos, online challenges. The Adult Book Group has been meeting online. We've been doing weekly storytimes, songs and rhymes. But we really found, we got such positive feedback from those in-person grab and go bags that we're going to continue that program in September and try to pair it with our storytime videos. Let's see. Are there any questions about summer offerings? I was also going to say a few words about the things we're adding now for fall, but. Nope. Okay. So we are adding some, Katie wanted to make sure I mentioned, we're adding, we're adding some databases that will be available for adults and kids. One is called Creative Bug. I think it was in the pilot last month. So it's a great, it's a great program that has all kinds of craft classes, kind of arts classes that people can take online and it, really nice tutorials on, on how to make things, simple things and more complex things from home. It also has the ability that we can share those classes. We could actually offer it through the library site as a group class online. So that's, that was part of its appeal. We're getting book flicks for kids. That's a scholastic product that offers read aloud books paired with nonfiction. And we think that'll be really popular with teachers this fall, as well as all the families learning from home. And also a New York Times subscription will be available to library patrons. We're waiting on our network to finalize the financial piece of that. piece of that, so they aren't yet up quite yet, but should be coming in the next month. Those, Katie just wrapped up the stats and noted that our ebook circ continues to grow pretty significantly. So this, this past July, July 2020, over July a year ago, there was a 25% increase in the number of ebooks that are being checked out by Milwaukee patrons. If you look at the numbers from two years ago, it's actually almost 40% that it's grown. So obviously, that's been a lucky thing to offer during COVID especially, finding more and more people want to go that option. I also wanted to just point out the, on the stats sheet, so on your handout, it's the attachment two. That has the numbers that Jess mentioned of the number, I think the really significant number is the number of patrons who walked through our doors those first three months that we opened here in the new building. And as she said, February was just through the roof. It was 22,086 people. That, that number is highlighted in yellow. It's the second grouping of numbers. But if you look back to what those numbers were a year ago, or any of the past three years, and consider that February is such a short month anyway, you'll see that, that those numbers are just astounding. And we certainly felt it. Staffing wise, I think we, we just realized the minute we got here. We knew it was, we were going to be, draw a lot of new interest in the building, but we very quickly discovered that it's a much bigger building with so many more people walking through the doors, and we definitely felt stretched pretty thin. Our staff did a tremendous job trying to, and we were, I really feel like we were just kind of starting to get our footing when unfortunately, it all came to a screeching halt. But we do have a little apprehension about doing that all over again, some fine day. So yeah, I think those are the major points we wanted to share. Does anyone have questions about either what we're doing or what we're hoping to do in the next few months or year? We certainly thank our library board for all their support and, you know, just recognize that they're volunteers and they're doing a tremendous job.
That's all great to hear, Jana. This is a question that's, I don't know, it's a little off-topic, but not so much. We've been working on figuring out our work around equity and inclusion as that becomes the new council goal. And I have been interested in having some engagement with the library. And I don't know if you have ever done anything like online reading groups, book groups or not. I know you have hosted book reading groups in the past, but that is something I've been curious about as something we might be able to offer to kind of help the community engage in some of these broader discussions and having some reading book group conversations around, you know, how to be an anti-racist or white fragility, or there's a lot of titles to choose from.
Yeah, so our, we have three different adult book groups actually currently that exist, and they have continued to meet ever since the COVID closure. So they are meeting online. They're using Zoom to do that. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we definitely have done small group discussions that way. I mean, just in the last few months, that was the first time we'd ever done it. I also know that we had a couple, we had a series of programs lined up in the spring through the Oregon Humanities Project that were conversations on difficult topics. And they were really incredible. We only had a couple, I think, before we closed. Sarah Roller was the person who was organizing that. I don't know if they are offering that same program online, but I wouldn't be surprised. It seems like it would work just like a book group would. In terms of kids, we have been opting to do pre-recorded videos rather than live because we feel like it reaches, we feel like it reaches more people when they have the ability to watch it at their leisure, rather than saying, we need you and your toddler to be here at 10:00 AM on one day, and if you aren't there, you'll miss it. So we're hoping that that's a more equitable practice is our reason for doing that with kids. Does that answer your question?
Not exactly, but it looks like Anne is going to clarify.
Okay, okay.
No, I think the, and please remind me, Counselor, I believe that we had had a discussion about holding book groups around things like white fragility and some of the other books. And we were trying to figure out if there was a process by which we could announce those and have them somehow facilitated through the library structure and system. Those books are now available. They were a massive backorder when we were having the first...
There's something about getting the books themselves, I see.
Getting the books themselves and then leaving a discussion group, I think, in the community around what that would look like. You know, growing together, learning together, being a part of those discussions together. And I, if, I guess the short answer is I know there's general interest from council. It's probably a question better for Katie about capacity and how we might be able to do that over Zoom, and she's out for the week, unfortunately. But I appreciate the reminder from Counselor Hize, and I will have that discussion with Katie when she's back in.
Well, and I would note, I mean, I, I don't know about all three of the book groups that currently exist, but I've attended one of them. And, and it was a very autonomous book group. It wasn't the library staff picking books or leading the discussion. They were just kind of using the room at the library to do their book group, which is great. I mean, I think we should offer that when we're able to meet. But I think it's a very different thing, the library actually sort of leaving a discussion or facilitating the discussion and picking the books and stuff. And I would, I think that would be a good thing.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of an open question for me. If, if there isn't capacity, and I totally understand, your world has been turned upside down. There are certainly people in the community who would be interested in helping with facilitation. So I guess really, I just want to make sure we don't lose this thread and, and that the conversation keeps going about how we can make it happen. I'm, I'm not deeply invested in a particular approach. I just want to, I want to try it and see, because I have certainly heard a lot of interest and need in different neighborhood associations. They're looking for ways to have these kinds of conversations and just people around in the community. So I'd like to try and find a way to facilitate that. And at the very least, having the library promote it, I think, is really helpful. You're so keyed in to all of the right populations.
I agree. No, I think it's a great question. I have, I don't know that it's been discussed here as us taking it on, so I think that's a great conversation.
Yeah, I would add, not just keyed in, but also respected, I think, the credibility there, you know, as a resource for reliable information, you know, certainly, you know, a place where people go to learn and grow, you know. And I think it's, you know, even though you're a part of the city, I don't think it's, it definitely doesn't have the feel of sort of city government, you know. So I think that's a very valuable, you know, asset that you bring.
Any other questions for the library? I do have one topic that came up earlier in the evening, and I did want to address that. So is there anything else that people have for either Jess or for Jana? So the other piece that came up then was the, the FTE count for the facilities, for the library in particular, and the budget. And I do want to talk about that for a few minutes. So the first piece is, when COVID struck, a number of our libraries in the area actually laid off staff. And we did not. We were actually very committed to keeping our employees employed during COVID for a number of reasons, partially because we didn't know how long this was going to last, but also because we made a commitment to our staff, and we figured there would be ways that we could create new ways of service in the time of COVID. And I have to give some serious props to Jana and to Kim and to Katie for coming up with programming that works. In the midst of all this, I really appreciate that we've been able to continue to serve our community throughout this period. Multnomah took a large chunk of their staff and actually terminated those employment agreements. And we've seen that elsewhere in the region. So I want to thank council. I want to thank the staff. And I think that we've all been just working to weather through this as we've been looking at our staffing levels. The second piece is, we are not currently at full capacity for hours of service, and we're not going to be able to get back there for quite a while. So the discussion that we had with the library staff during the budget cycle is that we're, we can't today. We're not sure what's going to happen with general fund over the coming year. We've been really transparent with council, but we just don't know what that looks like right now. And I don't want to lay people off. That's actually my biggest thing is, it's dicey right now, and I want to make sure we can keep our current employees employed. So that has been my focus. We did actually increase the overtime budget for the, the, the library staff or the, the non-actual people by a quarter person, so that there are extra hours that allow for a little more flexibility if we need to pull in people for illness, to cover illnesses, or to cover vacations, or to cover some of these other pieces. And part of why it's hard for us to know our service levels is we actually added 50% to this building, and then we shut it. So we don't know at our service level, what it takes to run this facility yet. We know that February was a huge month. We don't know what it means actually to have visitors to and from this facility, and we can't make budget assumptions right now to the benefit until we, we can balance out the costs. So I really appreciate that Kim, Jana, and Katie have had these hard conversations with me as we've been preparing the budget and as we went into this budget cycle. We'll know more once COVID's done. We're going to let it run for probably five or six months, or at least two. Two months would be helpful of seeing what the numbers look like when things maybe are what our new normal is, and that'll help us figure out ours. We do some incredible programming here at the city in our library department. And that is, that takes people, and that takes resources, and that takes money, and it takes time. So part of this too is there's a strategic plan happening with the library, and we'd like to hear from the community about what those expectations are, so we also can raise size the staff to those services. So I really appreciate Jess bringing it up. I think it's an important discussion. We're probably still at least a year out from being able to look into what our number should be, or can be, or will be. But I know that Kim really struggles on making sure that we have coverage during some of our daytime hours and some of our evening hours. So I don't want to minimize that. It's, it's difficult. And it's really important for us to be watching it. So we'll continue this conversation as we're able to gain more information, as we're able to open the library more up. We'll have that conversation with you all. We'll have that conversation with staff and with the library board. And we'll look at our resources at that point about where we need to be. Are there questions that you all have for me about that? I mean, I think the one thing I haven't said is that our high point for staffing in the library in our old facility, we're down 1.5 of FTE compared to our high point there. We've added 50% of space. So we'll figure this out in the coming couple of years, and we've got the right team to figure it out with me. So thank you.
Well, I mean, the floor plan we chose was in recognition of that, right? I mean, we, we chose to have, you know, one floor and one entrance, et cetera, et cetera, to hopefully not be...
Efficient.
Yeah, to make it more efficient and not need 50% more staffing.
I don't think we're going to be at 50% more staffing. But I think that one of the things that Jana can speak to is just making sure that we have a glass partition that does separate the entire building. Having at least two people on one side of that partition is actually important, just for safety precautions. So there's things like that that still have to be considered. But everything shut down, literally. Like, we got to the point where we would see the building run and everything shut down. So we, we've got at least a year before I'm going to be in this conversation, but I agree, Counselor Beatty, we did this for efficiency. We did a lot of these decisions about a single floor of a building for efficiency to reduce those overhead costs. But some of it too is we add things like the library of things. The library of things takes staffing, it takes management, it takes work. And so we've just got to make sure that we have the right staffing levels and that the policy changes that are being adopted by the library are the things you all want adopted, so that we staff correctly. But there's always an understanding of how much FTE count it's going to cost us in order to add those pieces into our system.
I think we've, we very quickly found that the community rooms and the study rooms and the meeting rooms, they were wildly popular and long overdue. But that was almost like a, that felt really like a full-time job, just managing, just starting to manage like that whole influx of requests. And granted, we were, it was all new. We were figuring it out for the first time, and it will get easier, but it, I think, we, you add things, even though it's a big, you know, even though it was built for efficiency. I think it was really built for accessibility for patrons too. I hope that was as much of a reason. That was certainly our reason for building it that way.
No, but it is something that the finance team, when we were looking at this, did consider. When we were trying to figure out how to finance this, was just the ongoing operations costs. You know, and part of this too, Counselor Beatty, is we're going to be adding a significant number of community spaces in about two years, because we'll have the new city hall. We'll have to manage those rooms equally. And you start looking at, do you actually just need somebody who manages our spaces? And do you add things like the plaza into that? Do you add, you know, all these rentable and usable spaces so that you have one person who's really looking at how those are managed? I don't know. We've got, we've got time, unfortunately. We have time, because this isn't going to go away anytime soon.
Well, and I think there's probably technological tools to help with that, too.
Booking. Absolutely. And just to give some props to Brandon Gill from our IT department, he actually jumped right in and started helping us with the interface for the library system, for how people engage with those spaces, and also helping city staff engage with them differently. Because those are meeting rooms for us too. Those are spaces that we can use to hold our city events, to hold our public meetings, to hold our listening sessions. And we want to make sure that we continue to use those spaces and have access to them. So all of those things go into this discussion. When I was at Salt Lake City years ago, my job actually was over the department that managed all of our spaces. So I've done event spaces for a very long time. They can become complicated. But yes, also, some of them run efficiently if you can get a sign-up form that works really well online. Sorry for the divergence, but it came up in the meeting, and I just wanted to make sure we had a transparent conversation with the public about what, what that decision process looks like for the budget process.
Thanks, Anne. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay, Jess, is that, Lita, any questions for you? I know that you are a board member and you, you are maybe not as, you and I don't talk all the time. Are there questions that come out of that you want to talk about? Okay. If you think of anything, or if the board has questions, I'm happy to come in with them too on that discussion. Awesome. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no more questions, thank you, Jess and Jana, for the great report. I look forward to the day we can actually go back in that building. All right, so following the work session, we will be going into executive session. Council meeting executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statute, ORS 192.6602E, to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. And with that, we are adjourning the work session, and we will be going into that executive session. Thank you.
And that executives in a separate Zoom meeting, so you have to log out and...